Education meeting. Mrs. Slump, roll call, please.
Dr. Cortalina?
Here.
Mr. Dottry?
Here.
Mrs. Fanna?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Arena?
Here.
Mr. Ristuski?
Here.
Flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the land of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in whose law we live, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Monmouth Township Board of Education provided public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Monmouth Township Inn and School Building, all Monmouth Public Schools, the Monmouth Public Library, the Monmouth Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, everybody. Just before we get into the student reports, there are two meetings that we have in December, December seventh and December twenty-first, so just mark it on your calendars if you intend to be present. High school student reps, I don't know if Phil or Dan or anyone would like to go first?
So I'll start, giving the sports update. So the football team wrapped up their season two weeks ago after falling past Tech Valley in the first round of the North Two, Route Three playoff. While first round loss was not how the team wanted to finish their season, they certainly did not take away from the incredible season that they took together, finishing in six and four. We thank the hard work of the marching men, cheerleaders, and the players for making this season a one-to-remember and giving us some unforgettable experiences as fans. Speaking of the marching band, they held their annual season banquet on Monday, November eighth, where they reflected on their past successes of the season and presented the season awards for Most Improved Player, Mustang Pride, and Mustang Virtuoso. The boys soccer team finished their season in Roxbury two weeks ago after falling two-zero in the second round of their state tournament. The boys boys that were after fourteen and five to finish the season and gave the fans some great shows to remember throughout the fall. A huge congrats to the girls soccer team on making the Cinderella run to the semifinals at their state tournament. While the girls struggled to put the pieces together in the regular season, they clicked at just the right time and thrown together a couple of memorable performances to end the season. It was fun to watch them play until the end, and we thanked the seniors for delivering a pretty special final run. The field hockey team made it to the second round of their state tournament before falling to Lakeland. It was an unforgettable year for them as well, as they put together an incredible regular season and took home the conference title for the first time in over thirty years. Perhaps the greatest run of all came from our volleyball team, as they fought all the way to the state second championship game. They unfortunately ran into a stout, wishmore center team in a town in Lakeland, but it takes nothing away from the electric playoff run that the ladies were able to put together. We thank our seniors for giving us a fun ride and making us proud until the very end. And finally, the cross country team wrapped up a great season this past Saturday, as they ran in group championships at Old Mill Park. The boys team, consisting of Adit Terra Pampi, J.T. Casarico, Alex Kieluk, Ryan Kyger, Renee Vunekuwal, and Chris Chris Scaron, and Dania Goroski, placed fourth at the state second championship. It was a phenomenal year for cross country, as they also finished with an undefeated record and captured the first division title in over twenty years.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan before we ask Phil to give a report? Great, copy answer report, thanks again. And I guess the winter seasons will be starting, what, in December, I guess? Yeah, until the end of December? Very good. Phil?
In past news, students have just, um, we got to see tons of creative costumes from all the student bodies. The first week of the number of those solidarity week, hosted by the HHS Alliance, and supported that LGBTQI+ community, students were asked for red, orange, and yellow on Monday, green, blue, and purple on Tuesday, and rainbow on Wednesday. That week was also the NJADA teachers convention, in which all schools were closed on Thursday, the fourth, and Friday, November fifth. Tickets were sold from November first to November twelfth for the senior banquet. This year, our senior banquet will be held at Hillfield Manor on December third, so all seniors will attend. From November eleventh to November third, the TDA Theater Company had an amazing performance for the day, the internet dive, as well as performance of every novel you read in high school in twenty-five minutes or less. As of current news today, November sixteenth marks the end of the first marking period. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to give, of course, I'm going to say that it's really the great to get back together, and I've had a wonderful first half of my senior year. In my four years, I have seen students more spirited and excited to be back for us than they do in the late, and I cannot be equal with the next new marking period spring. Also this week, the key club's hosting their annual Thanksgiving food drive. Students are encouraged to bring in non-fresh food items to their homewares to provide a Thanksgiving dinner to families in our community who would encourage themselves. The National Honor Society also be hosting their fall induction ceremony on November eighteenth. Looking forward to next week, the school rock will be hosting a performance on the November twenty-second during the day, on November twenty-third at September DM. We will also be having our Thanksgiving recess next week with an early dismissal on the November twenty-fourth, as schools close on the November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth in honor of Thanksgiving. I would like to say I'm thankful for the opportunity to be a student representative, and I hope everyone will have a Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions for Phil? Great, guys, thank you so much for bringing yourself to date. We look forward to that in the course, to let us know what's happening in the high school, and appreciate the wonderful efforts you put into giving them. Thanks very much, and hopefully we'll see you at the next meeting in December. Dan, if you'd like to leave, or if you'd like to stay, I don't think many people like to stay, but feel free to leave. Thank you very much. Dan mentioned in his report about the banned booster banquet that they had on November eighth, there were attendance, several board members were able to be in attendance also, and I know Amanda Cassidy's back there somewhere, I think there in a quarter, and I'd like to thank you again for the wonderful job the ban boosters did. Thank you. Renee?
Okay, as Philip indicated, we just are concluding our first marking period, and one of the things that we do each marking period is to recognize our Shop Right Stars. This is always a highlight for the board, to be able to celebrate some of the wonderful accomplishments. They're always extremely impressive, what our young students are able to accomplish. So, without any further ado, I would like to turn things over to Mr. Nata, who will introduce our student honorees this evening.
And before you do that, Ken, we used to be able to have the students come across, we can shake hands, we won't be able to do that. I'll be over there with the certificates, and I know Mrs. Marinello will probably want a picture, so let me finish, and then guys can go sit on that bench.
Understood, I appreciate your clarification. Good evening, I'm thrilled to be back in person with you to present our Shop Right Stars for the first marking period of two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year. Tonight's stars are nominated by faculty members in a wide range of categories, and winners were selected by the administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of all of the students, Sunrise Shop Right generously donated one thousand dollars to the class of two thousand and twenty-two. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. It's been a while since we've done this, so as I introduce the stars, if you could come up and join me at the microphone, that would be great. In the field of academics, congratulations to Serge, who's that son? Over the course of the past four years, Serge has made some truly remarkable contributions to the NTHS community. As president of forensics, Serge holds a degree of distinction from the National Speech and Debate Honor Society. Last year, Serge was ranked sixth in the entire state at original laboratory and went to octaphonics in two categories at that state tournament. As co-president of Computer Club, Serge programmed the robotic team's robot each of the past four years, is a national cyber scholarship finalist, and received congressional recognition for Serge's submission in the Congressional App Challenge, where he even got the chance to be Representative Chair. Serge maintains an impressive four-point-five GPA, and is also president of Film Club, first violin in the Chamber Orchestra, a member of the Triad Music Honor Society, National Honor Society, National American Scholar semifinals, and AP Scholar Development. Serge is waiting here back from several top colleges, but plans to major in computer science and cybersecurity. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Gina Roddick. Gina has a right premier reputation among teammates as being the quickest and essential team member. She's driven and hardworking, but incredibly modest, which is perhaps the reason why she received the varsity applause Unison Hero Award last season. On the Sun No More, Gina is not only a varsity starter on the field hockey and lacrosse teams this season, she is also the captain of both teams. Gina's talent on the field has been recognized this year through the Mustang of the Week Award and her ranking as one of the top one-hundred senior field hockey players in the entire state. She has a dedication to these sports continues off the field, as she is a volunteer field hockey coach in Monmouth and volunteer lacrosse coach in Mattel Lakes. In addition to coaching, Gina has participated in fundraisers each of the past four years, where proceeds go primarily in grant related cancer research. Gina is still applying to several colleges, but plans to major in communications and continue playing lacrosse at the collegiate level. Congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Jake Cassidy. Jake's passion and dedication for music is unmatched, and he has had an incredible impact on our entire arts department over the past four years. Jake is a member of percussion ensemble Chamber Band, lead drumset player in jazz band destroyed at the Triad Music Honor Society, co-president, lead drummer of School of Rock, and percussion captain at Orchard Band. Away from music, Jake is a cadet for the Monmouth Township First Aid Squad, mascot for the Tuwaka Civic Association, member of Peers as Leaders, Breach and Cavaliers Community Liaison of the Student Activities Council or SAC, recipient of prestigious character council award, inductee of the National Honor Society and Spanish Hispanic, Spanish Honor Society, and two thousand and twenty-one delegate for American Legion Jersey Boys State Session. On personal note, Jake was an essential part of our NTHS peer coaching program last year, where he served as a mentor to students who were struggling with online virtual instruction. Jake is still applying to several top colleges, but plans to major in biology or biochemical sciences. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Grace William. There is no cause too big or too small that help is needed, Grace is there to be support. During her freshman year, Grace became an essential member of School of Rock. Through performances and other various fundraising efforts, Grace has assisted in raising money for dozens of worthy and important causes, including homelessness, cancer, and the victories of domestic violence. At the very beginning of the pandemic, Grace volunteered and signed to a joint effort between NJIT and Morris County, where she assisted those individuals who may be facial groups for first responders. During this past summer, Grace worked at Paso Volo, I don't know if I pronounced that right, in Asbury Park. Paso Volo volunteered, or I should say partnered, with two local organizations in Asbury Park called Phil and Asbury Park Dinner Table. Together, Grace assisted in making and donating over four hundred weekly meals to those who need food. Grace is caring and selfless and has the spirit, determination, and passion to change our community in positive and long-lasting meaningful ways. Grace is still applying to several colleges, but plans to major in criminal justice or social work. Again, congratulations. Finally, in the field of leadership, congratulations to Daniel Arena. Through many of his actions, Daniel has been a de facto student here since he began appearing in his brother's virtual morning announcements during the start of the early portion of COVID lockdown. As the SAC president this year, Daniel has worked tirelessly to plan events to kick off the year, such as our Fall pep rally, senior tailgate, and homecoming board. Unfortunately, some of the events that Daniel planned this year could not occur, such as the Welcome Back Bonfire or Homecoming. Planning events only to have them canceled is incredibly frustrating, but Daniel is only energized and inspired to make the events that we do have, the events that do happen that we're doing. He is now in the process of developing a proposal for an upcoming pepper-up and meeting fundraising efforts with breakfast and promo. From his leadership in SAC to the morning announcements, Daniel has run wild with his role as voice of the mustangs. Daniel further demonstrated his leadership qualities through participation in clubs such as Dacko, Igboish, and Pyramidry, on our varsity basketball and golf teams as an inductee from the National Honor Society. Daniel is still applying to several top colleges and plans to decide a major in the very near future. Again, congratulations to Daniel, until all of our first marking period charred up starts.
Actually, there are parents who are in attendance this evening. Well-deserved award for all of the youngsters. Thank you.
I did just want to add that, in addition, Phil mentioned that the high school is currently engaged in their annual Thanksgiving food drive. We do have a number of other drives that have been going on in our other schools. Today, I was at Woodmont, they had quite the collection of food that they're donating, and I know several of the other schools are also collecting food and toys, and it's a wonderful example of how these film topic spirit really is very much a part of the Monmouth Township Public Schools, and we thank the community and the parents for their generosity in supporting those events. And I can put my hand up.
Thank you, Dr. Modra. I know that the high school especially has been very involved with collecting food drives for the Kiwanis Club. The Kiwanis Club next Saturday is handing out approximately forty bags of food, two boxes to each of the forty people who are in need in the community for their Thanksgiving Day celebrations, so we thank them for that. We have some good news, which is a good review, I'm sure someone will have. Business administrator, no report?
No report.
No report? Okay, we have committee reports, financial facility. Karen?
Uh, no report tonight.
Curriculum instruction, Dave? No report. Policy and personnel, Christine?
Number four.
Communications, Michelle?
Our committee met this afternoon right before our close session meeting. Some interesting information to report, actually very proud to share with the community that Sue Marinello, our very own communications director, is currently elected to serve as the treasurer of the New Jersey School Public Relations Association. We really are very fortunate to have Sue here, she's very respected around the state for all communications initiatives, and we certainly appreciate everything she does for us. Initiative going on just from a communication technology standpoint, Boston and its team are currently revamping how school messenger works for the teachers. They learn a lot from the system and are integrating and upgrading, and it will be more efficient and working better for the teachers. One thing for the community to make sure that they know, the way that technical issues with promo are handled are not through parent request anymore. If you're in the elementary school, teachers put in technical tickets, and if students are in middle school and high school, they go down to the test department in the respective school, Lazara the high school. It really has streamlined the way the process works, made it, you know, better for, I think, that the students, some parents apparently are still searching for the help ticket submission on the website, and people should know that's not really how it works nowadays. One thing to look towards for the future, when we upgraded and changed our, that updated our website two years ago, we contracted a company called School Point, and that's our current provider. They've been purchased by another company called Final Site, so there is going to be some type of integration and upgrade happening through early twenty-twenty-three is when we have time to do that. So that will give us an opportunity to, as we always do, as technology is changing, as the world is changing, look at ways that we can use that integration and upgrade, so you can improve our website more. So that's my first question.
Thank you. Safety and security, Mike?
Our next meeting is December seventh.
Ladies and gentlemen, your school boards, Karen?
Thank you, Charlie. So, on November third, I attended the meeting of the executive committee of New Jersey School Boards Association. Some of the highlights were, they established dates for the weekend, new board member orientation. They'll be February fourth, fifth, and sixth, and March fourth, and fifth, and sixth. The Friday night event on February fourth and March fourth will be virtual, with attendance in-person beginning on Saturday morning. There's also a proposal to revise the bylaws to change a little bit qualifications for officers. A lot of the changes will be that the officer will need to complete a full term. Also, a board member will need to qualify for and receive a board member certification. They're going to standardize the questions, eight questions, and allow for more flexibility. There was also a recap of this year's virtual workshop, and I think people might be interested that there were five thousand, over five thousand registrants, five hundred and thirty speakers, sponsors, and exhibitors, two hundred and sixty-three guests and parents for the steam tank event, and everyone hopes, and fingers crossed, that October of two thousand and twenty-two, we will be able to host an in-person workshop in Atlantic City. The Board of Directors of New Jersey School Boards is slated to meet on this Friday, the nineteenth. I am going to miss that session, because I will be attending the whole fame dinner, which is honoring, among others, our own Charlie Grau, as well as Mayor Gorman. And the delegate assembly for New Jersey School Boards will be conducted on Saturday, November twentieth, and this is a session where resolutions are sponsored by school boards, if they have a particular issue that they would like New Jersey school boards to become part of the policy. The last thing is, a press release went out today, New Jersey School Boards Association and the New Jersey Association of School Administrators are announcing an online university pub partnership. This university will offer interactive and engaging e-learning courses for all K-12 public school district stakeholders. There'll be enhanced digital training platform for to support the New Jersey education community. It's part of New Jersey School Boards Association's cooperative pricing system, which means their school districts can save money and bypass the often lengthy form bidding process. So we look forward to the beginning of that. And I just would like to echo Charlie's comments about the Mustang Band banquet, which was really a beautiful event, and we thank the Mustang for the bands for always inviting board members to attend their banquet.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. O'Brien, school board, Marsh County?
Marsh County school boards meets this Thursday.
There you go. Mr. Rappaport, Ed Zirk?
Yes, we met last week, and they're very happy to report that they have ninety-one percent of the professional staff, the Central Park schools are vaccinated, which makes it a lot easier for them to handle the testing, as it happened, to meet the state requirement. They're still having issues with the field staff, however, because that field staff goes into various public and private schools around county, and finding the staff that is vaccinated and qualified has been a little difficult. So they're, they're still looking for more people than they have, there's more open spots. The other thing is the sale of the Orange Academy Street building is still in process, and it's, it's a long process because there's a need to look for variances in order to revamp the building, I think, for housing instead of as a, as a school building. Closing date may not be until June, July, or August of this year. It's a long process to hopefully the sale go through, and then money can be redistributed to the other, up the other departments within the SAC.
Mr. Palmer, the boys?
Yes, had a meeting on November tenth. Just before, Reach has had eighteen events to date for the school year, that's as of the tenth. We discussed grant spending, masks for bright colors, our red masks for bright, during Red River Week. We tossed around ideas for post-graduation, we're still hoping to do something. We discussed renewing the graduation sign fund, as Ed Zirk was successful last year. And financing a couple of programs, financing a book called The Dangers of Smoking and Vaping, which is going to be distributed for elementary school students, and financing a program called Keep a Clear Mind to Educate the Elementary Students of the Dangers of Drugs.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. O'Brien, the athletic boosters?
The athletic boosters canceled their meeting for November. The next meeting will be Wednesday, December first.
Did I read somewhere in my that they might be leaving Zoom and going in person?
I had no, okay. Since there wasn't a meeting, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Do you see the ladies on, do you hear Karen?
Thank you, Charlie. The Cedar Hill Homeschool met on November tenth. Good news to share is that they were able to raise about forty thousand dollars with their turkey tray that was held in October. There was also a toys update, so there are new and exciting toys for those students who attended them. And their next large fundraiser will be a golf outing on April thirtieth.
Thank you. Hillary, I'm only for it. Renee, is it possible for these PTA's now are moving different towns and move? Can you ask someone to put the dates together, so when the PTC would be meeting for the last one, please? Joe, how are you?
The next meeting is in January.
Christine, patient?
Charlie, their next meeting is upcoming Monday at seven o'clock, and I think it's a Zoom.
Mike Palmer, Woodmont?
Yeah, no, of course, I also thought I had a number of dates for the next meeting, apologies.
Lazara, and Mr. Moga or Mr. Rappaport?
There was not a meeting, but I would remind folks that they did pledge for the little lessons, to send in their checks. PTC would appreciate that. Also, although it's not on this, I would like to mention the Monmouth Education Foundation. They are, they met last night, and they have money that they're looking to give to the teachers and form grants to start long-term projects for their classes. These would be projects that would benefit not just this year's students, but the upcoming subsequent year's students. And they are accepting applications, and they would, which they would love to have some teachers involved. Also, they're looking for more volunteers to join their organization, and if anyone is interested, you don't have to have kids in school, but if you are interested, it is a good organization that does raise money for worthy cause, so.
I'm still waiting to win the raffle.
Someone, no, please, I guess I'm waiting in all times.
Someone wants a raffle, have one every Friday, have it for the athletes, someone wants one.
Yeah.
Thank you. High school, Michelle, Michael, LeBron? You late?
Yeah, Mike, can I extend this meeting? It was on, it was last night, actually. It was Mr. Sandra being updating about upcoming events at the school. It was really great. There were teachers representing every department, and to see their excitement, enthusiasm of having all the kids back in person, and the man on stage. and hand-on things that they were able to really do this year, showing us samples of the project and the work they were doing was really great to watch. The PTC reported they just finished a Cookie Joe fundraiser. And they really wanted to emphasize to high school parents out there to remember to join the PTC for the year that is really rather rely on funds to be able to fund a lot of their projects. It's all done online. So if people have questions about that, reach out to the board and make sure you get your PTC membership in for the year.
Thank you. I'd like to just add, between the PTC meeting and the band boosters and everything, there's so much happening in this school, so much good things that are happening. The schools are magnificent, the projects that they come up with, the teachers and the students. I was really impressed last night by the meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
Chuck, are there any? Yeah, I'd like to also say that I also want to thank the band boosters for the hospitality. I was at the banquet of wealth as well. It was a wonderful time. And they're always very accommodating. Just thank the band boosters for all they do.
Okay. Any questions on any of the agenda matters? Public participation at this point? C9, I would entertain a motion to rule by this I to N. So move. Second, that act it in. Okay. Any questions on I? J? K? L? I would like to point out that everyone here probably knows already. L2, number three, the Superintendent of Schools has changed the retirement date from December 31st to July 1st. And we have the board, Dr. Worldkron. Any other questions on L? J? K? L? M, N? Any more questions? Go, call us as well.
Mr. O'Brien?
I am.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Dr. Cordellino?
Yes.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano? Yes, but abstain on section I. Mr. Rappelport?
Abstain, M dot one dot 26? Yes to the else.
Ms. Zuckerman? Yes. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
No need to go in the board session behind us. Some words under the lights going in the board. C9, section two is all business of the board. They have all business at this point. C9, section R, General Board Comment and New Business?
Charlie, I just wanted to mention that Christine Fano, I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony last Thursday. A very moving ceremony, and I guess still have a better than that. Thank you.
And the kids were ahead. Lazar students and his teacher, they did a great job.
Section, anything else for General Board New Business? Okay, public participation is not a good double guest. Did you make comments about anything in the district? Doesn't have to be on the agenda. And if you'd like to address the board with your comments? Could you just tell us your name, please?
Sure, Jennifer Bean, Cedar Hills. Sorry, I didn't plan on being dressed really.
You get that.
So thank you for everything that everybody's been doing. Social media has some weird things about it, also some negative things about it. Something that I noticed more recently in all of the town chatter is about bullying in the district that I, at the elementary level, I feel like it's something I brought up often. And I just, it seems to be much more noticeable. I know because we're getting back into the swing of things, because things are going really well, but I feel like everybody's getting back to the normal, swinging back in the other direction in terms of kindness. Certainly didn't see it on many levels in terms of society right now. Is there any in terms of curriculum? Or like, how do we feel like the board or the districts is going to be addressing bullying across the board? And that's being noted as an concern. Because I think in terms of things that I've been seeing here in my parents, that bullying is a concern. So it's a concern. I would just hear if there's any plans to kind of pass that.
I believe that we do have, have for quite a long time, continue to have very strong character education programs across the district and all of the schools. I would encourage parents to, you know, contact, whether it's the school counselor or their child's teacher, if there are any issues that their children are experiencing with bullying. We certainly have very clear procedures for investigating any of those matters. And the schools are, I think, all very well-versed in those processes and do follow up on any information that they receive. So I would, you know, encourage people, if they have concerns, to reach out to their principal or school council.
I think just to follow up on that, one thing that I've noticed is that until something actually happens, like until there's a specific incident, things might not necessarily be brought up. So something to consider is maybe thinking about doing more, just like a, I think, some basic kind of services. But just really not even sort of surveying parents or children or just kind of passing for more information as opposed to like waiting for things to come. It's just something.
Well, I will tell you that it is happening in the school, that that kind of information is delivered to the students on a regular basis.
But to me, I feel like that's more like middle school, high school. I've been on.
No, elementary, absolutely. It is very much, you know, our school councils are in the classrooms doing lessons on that on a regular basis. So it's definitely happening at the elementary level as well.
Okay, thanks.
Do you know? Seeing the others would remind you that the next meetings are December 7th and 21st. If you have someone who'd like to speak, I'll give you an opportunity.
Hey, John Fazio, 7 Walla Drive? Can you hold that mic up? I'll give it. Has that better? Real quick. Do you hear me, Paul? John Fazio, 7 Walla Drive? I'm broke. So I just want to say, it was funny, she talked about bullying. And I had also seen some stuff online as well as in person. Even at one of the board meetings, I think it was the superintendent search meeting, we were discussing, you know, how there's concerns about bullying and maybe even some racism with kids in the school. I found it very disturbing. I always have. My daughter was bullied. She just graduated last year. But it still goes on. And I know it's, you know, no one here can do anything about it. But I think it's up to all of us to keep our eyes open. And I think it sounds like it's more widespread in some of the sports areas. And I was remembering all my kids were really not, you know, in the cheerleading or playing, you know, when you had football or whatever, a few daughters. But it sounds like it's more widespread in those areas. So I think it's on all of us, you know, everyone here in the audience, well, everyone up front here. So just keep an eye out for it and say something. So I just wanted to kind of back up what she said on that point. The reason I asked you to talk was to ask about the mandatory COVID testing for teachers if they don't turn their vaccine card. And I believe the district has free testing in place. So I had a couple of questions around that. From what I understand, there's limited, the testing is limited to nasal swabs. And they're not using the saliva test. I'd be interested to know, if you're allowed to tell me, what percentage of eligible teachers are utilizing this service you're providing? Was it decision to just have the nasal testing done? So that many of the people who are eligible would utilize the service? And I say this because my little family doctor recommended that we do not regularly use the nasal swabs for, you know, this is my doctor telling me, is concerned about nasal trauma from prolonged use as well as potential chemical exposure over long-term use. So those were some concerns from my doctor. Those were, if you end up saving them to consideration. And then also, I guess, last year, in order to provide this free testing available to teachers, what are the, I guess, benefits or pros and cons that the school district gets? Is there some kind of funding model that you get from the state? Like, who's paying for it? Is it, you know, do you have to agree to do something because you're getting the free funding? Just some questions I had. I don't know if you can answer them here tonight, or if I need to, you know, email them. But that's all I have for today. Thank you.
I would indicate that the COVID testing that we're providing is an option that we provide to our staff who need to test and/or to comply with Executive令53. We're not obligated to provide or required to provide that testing. We're providing right now as convenience. At the current time, it is provided at no cost to either the district or the employees. The firm that we are working with, we opted to participate through the state. So currently, that is at absolutely no cost to the district. They, whatever they're doing on their end, they are working it through available federal funds. I know that's not necessarily the case in other districts, but at the time, it's not costing us anything. Because we are involved in the state's program, we do not at present time have an option in terms of which tests we can elect, select. So that is the testing that is being provided to us. As I said, employees who need to test are not obligated to test with us. As long as they get those results and submit them to us on a weekly basis, they are free to go anywhere and have that type of test. They cannot do a home test. But other tests are certainly accepted. And that would be their own choice if they wanted to pursue an alternate form of testing.
Thank you very much. Just one thing I want to come to part of that. Do you happen to know what percentage of eligible teachers utilize the service?
30% currently.
About 30, yeah. About 30% of those who need to provide that information to us are utilizing the services in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If we don't have any other questions, I would like to have you all return, please. Thank you. Hold on, favor. All right. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.